Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, February 5th, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. The meeting, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing remote public participation. All members of the board are present in person. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I am Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry, and on her right is Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente, and on his left, Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff tonight are Jim Malloy, the town manager, Kelly Extell, deputy town manager. Also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbeck, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's meeting is a regular session of the board, and we will be taking general public comments. Before we start the open public comment section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together for the best interests of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes, and at all times, speakers are limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine to be recognized or click the raise hands button in the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight, I'll be using the Zoom timer feature to display the remaining time for a speaker. This is a two-minute countdown timer. When the timer reaches zero, I will interrupt and allow the speaker to finish their sentence. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment tonight about an item that is not covered elsewhere on our agenda? Seeing a member remote, Ms. Sonny.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. This is regarding a tragedy that befell one of the Indian-American members of our community, and a family lost their primary owner and a parent. And I just wanted to find out what are the ways that we can support such families in the time of tragedy, especially from the town? Is there some place where we can go and direct members to, you know, just understand how the town can support them? I know we have protocols on the school side, which have been activated, but just wanted to know how to do that on the town side. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sonny. And while we don't take response to issues, Mr. Malloy, if there is any direction you can provide to Human Services or other locations?
Human Services would probably be the best location.
Right, thank you. And Ms. Sonny, we can give you a little more detail on who to, how to contact when we're off the meeting. Seeing no other. Let me hold on a sec. Right, seeing no one else online and no one in the room, we will proceed with our agenda. Colleagues, we will go to Select Board announcements and liaison reports. Tonight, we have no written comments in our packet. Are there additional announcements or verbal comments? I'll have some, but I'll start with Ms. Hay.
Thanks, sorry. So two sort of significant events last week in town. The first was the Lexington Lyceum-sponsored Community Conversation Series, which covered affordable housing. It was last Tuesday evening, and they had a really great panel moderated by our rep Sicolo. And we actually really dug into both the sort of meaning of affordable housing as well as options that we could be doing Elaine Tong presented. I know we're going to hear from her again this evening, as well as Chris Klatchman and a few other people. It was really well-attended, and I think it was very educational. It's a great series. I would encourage you to look into some of the materials as well. And then Friday, the League of Women Voters had a session on getting to net zero. I don't know if, I don't know if it was also broadcast, but I don't think I saw anybody else from the board there, but it was great. And I have to say, again, Michelle Sicolo sort of organizing and moderating, but one very gratifying thing, I mean, we always talk about how we want to accomplish things and what we do, and we, we hear sort of the feedback loop, but the executive director of Just Zero, who was one of the speakers, said, and this is a direct quote, "If every community was Lexington, we would not be in this predicament." And I thought, you know what? Let's take a moment once in a while to say, "We are, we are making progress." And we say sometimes that we love to be first at things, and I thought that just felt very nice. My, when I, and I actually, I will say kudos to Maggie Peard, our Sustainability and Resilience Officer, to Sustainable Lexington, the Green Teams, and everybody else has been working to get us here, but that was actually lovely. And then the last thing is just tomorrow morning's magic meeting. We are going to be, including on the agenda, a discussion about region-wide projects. And I think I had mentioned before that the, several times I have mentioned our work on the construction noise element of the bylaw, there has been a lot of interest from the other communities. So I'm hoping that we will actually come up with some money to fund, from a regional perspective, a look at solutions. So I will keep you all posted.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. And I'll just point out that we seem to be having an issue with the camera today. It is floating around and pointing at the wrong places. So I'm going to ask board members, if you can connect to the Zoom session, to turn on your own camera so that you'll be visible throughout the meeting. If you can't, we will make do. But do please keep your speakers and, and microphones turned off so that we don't get feedback. And Ms. Barry, to, to go to you for your comments before you have to go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So just a brief update on the 250th celebration. Last week, I traveled to Hingham along with Sandhya Iyer, our Economic Development Director, and Mr. Lucente to attend the quarterly 250th, Rev 250 meeting, meeting, meeting with other groups who are involved in events surrounding 250th, the anniversary of the revolution. We also heard feedback from the Boston Tea Party, who was one of the first events that happened in December. So it was really great to hear of what they went through in their process and the crowds which they had, which were many, many, many times what they anticipated. So just want to put that out there, you know, crowds are going to be larger. And then on Tuesday night, we had our community meeting at the community center that was very well-attended. We had, you know, pretty much a full house. So I want to thank Mr. Lucente for all the work he did on that, along with members of the commission. And then also to announce that the 250th Commission has been looking into the possibility of a permanent memorial. This board voted that the location would be Belfry Park at our last meeting. The call to artists, the deadline was last week, and we had 36 applications, international submissions as well, and it has been narrowed down to five semifinalists, who will now go through some concept development, and there'll be a community meeting regarding this in early March. So that's just a very brief update of what we're up to.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. On my left, were there any comments? And Mr. Sandin.
I just wanted to mention that on the Lexington list and many other residents have been noticing that electricity bills had changed from December to January. And I just wanted to mention that the Towns Community Choice Supplier has changed from Constellation New Energy to First Point Power. And at least one community choice customer has mentioned that they were not shifted appropriately over. So just a, a, a point to folks listening that they should check their ever-source bill when it comes and make sure that it still says that they are shifted from Constellation New Energy to First Point Power as a way to ensure that their bill would be about $24 lower per average customer.
Right, Mr. Sandin, while the town rate has gone up, for anyone who fell off the town rate and went to the ever-source rate, they would have seen a much more significant increase. All right. So colleagues, I just wanted to give a very brief report on School Building Committee progress. As you know, this is a major project for the town, and we are in the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority's, process for evaluating how to move forward. We're currently in the feasibility stage, which has architects working on whether or not it will be a replacement as a new building, a renovation, or an in-place, a code-compliant set of changes. Quite a bit of work is going on. There are meetings occurring several times a week. The public and this board can follow progress at lhsproject.lexingtonma.org. And while, I'll repeat that URL for you to look at, but you, as members of the community, will be receiving a postcard in the mail in the next few weeks, which will give you information about public events, as well as the, the reference to the website for the project. That, that mailing will go to every household in town, and its primary purpose is to make the community aware of the third community forum, which will occur on March 6th, in the evening in Baton Hall next door in the Cary Memorial Building. But along with the meetings that the school, the School Building Committee are attending, there are several focus groups that are going on, which are bringing in key stakeholders from various sources, and these include the Sustainability and Mechanical and Engineering Systems Focus Group, the Site Safety and Security Group, the Educational Planning and Equity Group, and the Exterior and Interior Design. For everyone, one, one of the other things that you will see coming is a timeline, which is for anticipated dates. No dates are known for certain at this time, but we're working to try to have a town meeting assessment of the request for funding the project in the fall of 2025. And, and a dead exclusion vote would presumably be called by this board, coincident with that just after town meeting. And there will be that timeline made available on the website. And the, the last thing I want to make sure people realize is when they look at that timeline, those dates are anticipated dates, and they also point to the long period of time it takes to go through this project, and that construction is not going to create a new building or renovated building in the next few years. It is expected it'll be finished before the end of the decade. And the exact dates will depend on what kind of projects. Doing something in place takes longer than doing something brand-new, et cetera. So we will see, and I'm very excited by the, the work that our consultants are doing, as well as the energy that is displayed at these committee meetings. Right, Mr. Malloy, do you have a?
Mr. Pato, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that URL?
Oh, yes, I did promise. It is lhsproject, P-R-O-J-E-C-T, the word, all run together, dot lexingtonma.org. And again, you will be receiving this in a, in a good-sized postcard coming to your homes in the next few weeks.
And thank you for the report. Appreciate that and all the work that you're doing on the committee.
Mr. Pato, can I follow up? Because this is the goal that I'm shepherding. Will this be on the town website?
So there are links to it from the town website, and we will talk a little bit about it when we get to the goal of discussion later today. All right, Mr. Malloy.
Yeah, so I've just a few items that I'd like to highlight. First is highlighting Kate DeAngelis in our Recreation Department, who was named one of the 30 under 30 in the country in the National Recreation and Park Association. And that Dave Pensino, our DPW Director, was awarded the Gill Founders Award from the Sports Field Management Association, based on his lifelong achievements. The other two things I'd like to note is that we are getting a Kickstarter grant for Network Gethermal to look at a project here in town, and that in my last update, I put in a note about the tension between historic preservation and sustainability and energy efficiency, and suggesting that in the next few board meetings, we try to schedule a time where we could have a discussion about perhaps setting up a committee or a task force to take a look at these two items. I know from speaking with Mark Sandin and Joe that this has been looked at before, and that there have been times when there's been close to an agreement, but then it's never really been followed through. And so it's something that I'm starting to hear from residents that are looking to do energy efficiency projects in their older homes are having a hard time getting them approved and are told, "No, stick with single-pane windows." You look at this building itself, and this building is all single-pane windows, and at what point in time does that not make sense to replace those with double-pane, energy-efficient windows? Because it's one of the biggest areas where you get heat loss. So I think it's something that we should have a discussion about, because it not only affects residents, but it affects all of our town and school buildings as well. And that's all I had.
Well, thank you, Mr. Malloy. I'm sure we will have a broader discussion when it comes on our agenda sometime in the near future. Consent agenda is our next item. We have four items tonight. First is to approve a Select Board Committee appointment to the Greenways Corridor Committee. Second, to sign the warrant for the presidential primary. Third, to approve Select Board from January 17th. And fourth, an application for a one-day liquor license for Lex Media at Lexington Depot Building on 13 Depot Square. Colleagues, are there any items members wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda items as submitted in the agenda packet. Is there a second, Ms. Barry?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. We'll now move to items for individual consideration. We'll begin with item one, which is an application for a common vittler's license for Mothership Ilwife LLC, doing business as Revival Cafe. Revival Cafe Kitchen at 1729 Mass Ave, for the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday, for seating in a new cafe-style eating establishment. The applicant has worked with the Department of Public Health, Building Department, the Zoning Department, for their respective required permits and inspections. And I believe we have the owner and onsite manager, Ms. Shirazi and Ms. Chomnis, online to ask, answer any questions, should the board have. So colleagues, have you been able to look at the material in the, in our packet, which displays an interesting-looking new cafe, which I'm looking forward to seeing come to existence? Any questions? Mr. Lucente?
Just one question on opening estimated timeframe.
Hi there. We are estimated to open end of March.
Great, thank you very much, and good luck with that.
Thank you so much.
Excited to have something addition in the center. We do not like empty storefronts, so this is wonderful.
We're very excited to open.
Very good. Any other questions? Ms. Hay?
I was just going to say, I saw a fair amount of work going on today on the storefront and the change of sign, and it looks like the progress is going at a great pace, so we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to the grand opening, or even the soft opening. So colleagues, if there are no further questions or comments, I move to approve the common vittler's license for Mothership Ilwife LLC, doing business as Revival Cafe and Kitchen, 1729 Massachusetts Avenue, for the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. Ms. Barry?
Second.
If it moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good, and the best of luck.
Thank you.
Bring us to item number two, which is an expenditure of funds for a gift of cash received by the fire department. And we have with us Chief Sensaba, Fire Chief. Do, would you like to present, or do we want me to outline it? So just, so the board is, is fully aware, there's a local family that has generously offered to donate $10,000 to the fire department for early detection of cancer. The plan is to use these funds to, and to apply $500 through reimbursement for each of the most senior 20 firefighters to offset a portion of the cost of a Galeri test. And the cost of this test is $649, so each firefighter would be contributing 149 on their own. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the individual department head is authorized to accept the gift, but can only expend funds from a gift upon approval of the Select Board for the purposes of the gift. And we are being asked to give that approval. Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Barry?
I just want to thank the donor for making this very generous donation. I wish we could do more.
I think that is the unanimous feeling of the board. And Ms. Hay?
To that point, actually, is this the sort of thing, Mr. Malloy, that we can make sure gets into, like, the link to Lexington? Because, you know, philanthropy inspires other philanthropy. I'd love to, you know, remind people that this is an option.
Mr., Mr. Malloy is nodding yes. Mr. Malloy, the cameras are off for you, so.
The cameras are off, and the answer is yes, we can do that.
Very good. So I will move to approve the use of the gift funds donated anonymously to the fire department for the purposes of screening for early detection of cancer as proposed. Ms. Barry?
Second.
We moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous. Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the anonymous donor. Brings us to item number three, and this is a vote to lay out Tucker Avenue as a public way. The board will recall that we had presentation on this at a previous meeting, and, and at which time we were not taking a vote, we were having a hearing, and tonight is the opportunity for us to actually move this forward with a vote. We have Mr. Livsey, the town engineer, available online. Should you have any additional questions after, after our previous meeting? I think it's, it's Mr. Wiseman.
Hi, yes, yeah, I just wanted to come in. I'm, I'm here in place of Mr. Livson. This is Matt Wiseman with the Lexington Engineering Department. If there's any questions on this item, I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. I'm looking across at the board, and they don't appear to have any questions. So I will move this along. So I move to lay out Tucker Way as a public way and recommend acceptance be scheduled, may restate that because it's Tucker Avenue. Move to lay out Tucker Avenue as a public way and recommend acceptance be scheduled for the 2024 annual town meeting.
Second.
If it moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous, 5-0. And thank you, Mr. Wiseman, for attending.
Thank you all.
All right, so this brings us to item number four, which is to review the America Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, requests for the fourth quarter of fiscal year '24, right? It's, our, our packet says 23. Well, the next quarter.
It's actually for the last quarter of 2023. They just had to the end of the quarter to get it in, and this is the first meeting we could put it on.
Right, thank you, Mr. Malloy, for that clarification. And, Mr. Malloy, would you carry us through this?
Yes. So as, as previously stated, in one of my last weekly updates, there are a number of accounts that we will be closing. Those include one with the Lex Retailers Association for Events, the participatory budgeting for the dog park, developing a proposal for the Affordable Housing Trust, because we did it in-house, we didn't hire a consultant, the remaining funds for the SPRD consultant, and the remaining $76 for the fire pumper overage. I don't think Derek was going to spend that, right? So total is $106,938. That has been added, that requires no action, the board will just close those accounts out. That's been added to the remaining balance, which is shown on the ARPA spreadsheet, which is $486,588, so that there's a total of $593,526. There are a number of requests, and these, that's net of, if the board were to approve all of these requests. So the requests are specialized fire nozzle for electric vehicles for $6,547, fire hose at $51,216, radios for $69,354, and then fire prevention office furniture, $6,448. If that doesn't get approved at town meeting, we would not be buying that, and we would be closing that out, because we have the additional fire prevention officer in the budget for fiscal year '25. And then the last one, which is a combination fired, this is fire department stuff, the last one, that's a combination fire department, Public Works, is a request to do a Hartwell Avenue Compost Site water main extension and provide better fire protection at that site for $75,000. And then from Recreation, there's health and safety equipment for the aquatics and summer staff, a Code Blue tower and call box. And then from the Town Managers Department, which includes also the Police and Fire Department, is a Police and Fire Staffing Needs Study, to take a look at the overall overtime in those two departments, the staffing, the staffing patterns, and, and to get some recommendations on how to better account for those and budget for those, because we've been having issues over the last couple of years. From DPW, we have a request to do the curbside, expand the curbside food waste program for $396,000. We have a vehicle for the Health Department for $50,000, that would be an EV. Given the, some of the recent trends in EVs, that price might actually be down to about $37,000. The vehicle we've been buying, the Ford Mustang Mach-E for staff, is actually, they reduced their price in the last couple of weeks. Then we're looking at a general liability insurance consultant, as the board is probably aware, about every five years, we go out for a bid, and this would be to pay for the consultant to take a look at our general liability casualty property insurance. And that's $25,000. We have $75,000 to do an American Disabilities Act Town Building Self-Evaluation Transition Plan. We've done these before for a lot of our buildings and a lot of our parks, and it's time to reassess all of our municipal buildings at this point in time. We have $105,000 for Tyler ERP Cashier-ing Module. That would be a one-time expense in the budget. In the PIRs, we have a $40,000 ongoing maintenance cost for that software. And then we also have $50,000 request for a water sewer rate study. So those are all of the requests that we have. The backup documentation has been provided with the packet, and the spreadsheet has been updated as of January 31st, middle of last week, on, on what's been spent year-to-date. And so all of the information should be available to the board in the format that we've been using the last year or so.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. So colleagues, Ms. Barry, do you have a question? Yep.
Regarding the spreadsheet, Mr. Malloy, can you just go over what the top of the column? So the column that says 131, 2024, it's the third one from the right?
Yeah.
Is that the balance left?
That's the balance that's left.
Okay, so we're not closing out everything at this point, just closing out some.
Yeah. So some of those numbers will change. Mr. Lucente?
A question, and then I have some comments. But the question is on, this is minor, but I noticed the Code Blue box that's going at the aquatics area. I was just curious, is that, I see it, I see the light every, every time I'm leaving the office, I'm thinking, "Look, it's over there." But it's just the box. Is that you? Is, have we had calls on that? Is it getting utilized? And what, there's just some more details on where would it go? Is it vastly far from the other one?
Good evening. This would be a second call box on the park. It would be put over by the new restroom building, by the playground, and on the other end of the tennis court. So we would have one closer to the other portion of the park, and it would be the same style with the blue beacon light. In terms of the one that's at the pool now, we have had one emergency call when we had somebody on the track that was injured. And other than that, there's been just like a random, like, somebody pressing it by mistake. But we do test it every Thursday morning to make But we do test it every Thursday morning to make sure that the phone line works and everything and it's it's been nice. I go by at night too. And knowing that we have a lot of people that walk through the park after dusk, it's nice to know that those are available.
Should I wait for questions?
No, I think let's just go ahead with.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously, just stepping back, our initial intent with the ARPA money was, I think we as a board were pretty clear about we wanted this to be used for COVID relief, economic stimulus. You know, these are obviously pushing in a different direction. You know, it's more of a list of things we would fund out of either PIRs or capital requests or things that would come, you know, in a normal town meeting. So I and I see them all and I go, yeah, this is a good use, knowing that we have pressure to spend the money. You know, I see them all. At some point, maybe not all of them, but many of them need to get done. My concern is the you know, I'm just going to put out my concern about we have this huge event coming up. And I'm not quite sure we're fully prepared for that event. That referring to the 250th in April of 2025, which is after, I believe, some of the expiration of the funds or the funds need to be used by him. Just I remain concerned because while we have put money into the 250th from ARPA, the amount of dollars that we need to run a successful and safe event aren't quite going to match this. And it is probably for us our biggest economic stimulus opportunity in the last 50 years for Lexington. And I want to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward to maximize those. So I'm putting that out there as a concern. I've only been on the commission now for a little over two months. It's two months and, you know, witnesses, there's a lot of interest in the community to do a lot and to make this a big event. And what we're seeing for the staffing numbers just right out of the gate is it's it's going to be expensive just to staff for this weekend and and some of the smaller events. So I I'm just want to, again, express my concern that we don't have a lot of opportunities for money in multiple places. And this was this was one of the handful. And, you know, I know we're not doing the participatory budgeting anymore, which I think is wise. But I'm hoping we can maybe not overdo the spending all at once. And I believe if Mr. Malloy could correct me if I'm wrong, but just to clarify, if we approve all of these tonight, that still puts 593,000 that has been not accounted for in any way, shape or form.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Lucente, I hear your concern. I want to echo two things. One is as we are approaching the end of the opportunity period for ARPA funds, I think we are relaxing our our guidance a little bit on how to spend the money while most of these actually still tangentially are connected to what we said were the goals. These are things that might have been more difficult for us to allocate the money to a year and a half ago. The but it's also, I think it's important for you to have outlined the concern for the 250th. We are going to be hearing a little later tonight on town meeting articles, a request for funding there. But I think what I'm hearing from you is that you're concerned that there will be need beyond that request. And I am, I am heartened that we still have about $600,000 left, which would be a significantly large increase to the funding for the 250th, should we need that. So I think what I'm trying to say is while I hear you're you're raising this yellow flag, I'm not concerned about the requests that have been put on the table tonight with respect to the the overall ARPA budget is as my view on this. Mr. Sandin and then Ms. Barry.
So I'll follow along with Mr. Lucente with a simple question first and then some some comments. So, Mr. Malloy, you mentioned just a few moments ago that the electric vehicle prices are coming down a little bit. So how does it work if we have $50,000 allocated and then we end up spending less on a on a car?
Similar to some of the other items that we've closed out up above, we would just close out the difference.
So I appreciate that. And as the board is aware, there's a number of electric vehicles that are available for base price of under $30,000 that may be appropriate for these kinds of needs. And then, of course, some rebates and incentives on top of that. But going to the comments, I share Mr. Lucente's concern that we have had for quite a long time, a nexus for how we plan to use the ARPA funds for public health pandemic-related expenses and economic stimulus for for the town. And I continue, you've heard me say this many times before, that I'm not certain we're through this pandemic from an economic stimulus event and we're focused as a select board on revitalizing the center. And I think and and other other areas of town that have been affected. And I think this is an area where we need to be thinking carefully about how we how we use these funds. And I'd love to figure out ways that we could be using these types of funds for economic stimulus. The board has also been equally clear that we shouldn't be using ARPA funds for normal operating budget expenses. And so a lot of these things to me look very much like normal operating budget expenses, water rate sewers. As Mr. Lucente said, these are all excellent things to do and things we should be doing as a town. ADA Evaluation General Liability Consultant seems like it would pay back right away immediately. ERP Software Module is the same kind of thing. Overtime Budget Analysis, I would put in the same category, seems to me to be things that are normal, everyday, ordinary operating expenses. And so I would be, I think we should be doing these things, but I would think they should come from general fund. That's that's my perspective on that.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. I'm going to go to Ms. Barry in a second. I just want to call out these most, many of these were PIRs that we looked at that did not make the budget.
Right.
Right. So so the observation that these are things that should be paid for out of our regular budget is meaningful, but the answer is going to be they won't happen. Because we've already cut them. Right. So if you would like to see these kinds of things in the timeframe that we were hoping for, this is the source of funding. Ms. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Pando. So I don't have a problem with the list that's in front of us this evening and I echo Mr. Lucente's comments about the 250th. And thank you for raising that. I just have a question about the green part of the spreadsheet, just to get some clarification. Again, it's kind of like, you know, when you're getting down in the money, you're like, oh, my God, we're going to run out. But where are we with meeting room technology? And I ask that because in the governor's municipal, help me with the wording, Jill. Empowerment Act that she brought forward. It looks like hybrid meetings are going to be here to stay. So where are we in terms of purchasing and all that and getting all the rooms set up? And is there enough money here?
I believe there's enough money there. Tim Gonzalez, who's our IT Director, is working on this project and he's involved personally on this. And he was off for a few months on paternity leave. And so he is back and it's something that he's working on right now. And we expect these funds to begin going right out the door pretty soon.
Okay, so now I'm going to change hats and my library hat on. Do we know if there's money in that number for library? Can you check that out?
I can check that out. I'd have to take a look at the original presentation on it, which rooms were actually included because there is a whole list of rooms.
Okay, because I know as we're getting close on finalizing that for town meeting, there was a question if that's in there and if it's in there, what it's in there for? And if it's enough. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Hey?
Thank you. So I have a couple of specific questions I want to just ask. So first of all, I will say, you know, building on Mr. Sandin's point about the nexus. And I understand that we're getting low on the on the deadline, but I still think that there are things that we can do that really are better implementation of our stated needs or our stated goals for this money. So for instance, I will say, you know, obviously, we, in response to the pandemic, we have increased the staffing in our health department. And therefore, I see a fine connection to the to the health, the health department vehicle. I also think, you know, the public health and safety, I don't think there's a single thing in the fire department requests with which I have an issue, except I will ask, we carry an FFNE budget, I'm pretty sure, still within the the DPF. And I'm wondering with $6,000, really, we can't put together one office worth of furniture with all the furniture that's floating through our various buildings. And I don't know. Anyway, I would ask for a little more dig on that before we, but I'm not going to hang my hat on it. The other question I wanted to ask, you know, that we have two things hanging in this gray zone. And, you know, we're talking about not having a lot left and that we may need it for the 250th, and yet the gray zone is sort of marked as a TBD, like to be brought up later. And I will say, the small business development, economic development has been one of our goals for this money. And we hear over and over and over again about the need to really finish that signed by law update. So I guess I would like to know a little bit more about why we aren't recommending that now, what that 75,000 will cover. Will that get us to finish that project? What else does that really do? Because I know we've, I know actually the Economic Development Office has been doing a lot of work. And I know that there's a better toolkit out there now on the website for small businesses. But we still heard it even, I think, at the meeting last week, was it the last small business meeting? That that's still an issue. So I would actually like to flag that for additional scrutiny. And then while I am always in favor of pretty much everything we do in the Recreation Department, I'm going to ask in a day and age when everybody from a very young age on carries a cell phone with them. And we have one blue box that's not really getting used, whether this is the best use for this funding. You know, they were great when I was in college. I always loved not being, you know, out of line of sight of a blue box when I walked home at night. But I do wonder whether that is still as good an option and as necessary an option today.
Mr. Sandin?
So thank you. I just wanted to ask a question about the the staffing analysis. So there's $120,000 being proposed here. This would mean that it would require an RFP, correct?
That's correct. Either an RFP or an RFQ.
Yeah. So so I'm just wondering if there's any urgency of approving this tonight. And one of the reasons I ask is because what was included in the select board's packet was a cover letter, sort of a proposal for how this might work. It did not include the 71 pages of proposal that comes along with it. And Mr. Malloy graciously provide that to me, but the rest of the board hasn't had a chance to see it. And I I think there might be some, I guess I have two comments. One is I sort of understood when Mr. Lucente was asking for us to review overtime budgets. And this is a good idea and I fully support the idea that that we have done this in the past successfully in the fire department. But it didn't require going outside for $120,000 study. And so I was kind of wondering whether we might be able to save that $120,000 by doing a similar kind of thing that we did with the fire department that yielded useful results. So I'm looking at this as a as a way that maybe this this proposal is a larger response to a request that was made than than necessary sort of to look at all staffing for police AMTs and and fire. Instead of just the smaller requests that we, I thought I heard at our table, which was let's try to understand the overtime budgeting issue. And I thought that would be what we'd like to look at. So my and the and the other thing that I'd ask is so my, my, my my recommendation would be that we don't do this at all. Because I think we may be able to save the money by doing some of this work internally. But if we do decide to go forward, that we take some time to review what's going to be in an RFP and what we're trying to accomplish here. One of the quick things that I saw just scanning through this, and I might not have been able to I might not have been able to see it in just the short period of time I had today to look at this that I didn't see in the proposal that they would be looking at how to integrate social services into the police and fire and EMT sort of thing. That's something if we are going to go forward with this, I'd like to be able to see.
If if I could just respond to that a little bit. The that particular submission on ARPA was not in response to any comments from the select board. It's from discussions I've had with our finance staff, our HR staff, our police chief and our fire chief about their staffing levels and what we need to do in order to either determine. Because it's it's much more, it's much more than looking at overtime. It's looking at overall staffing, staffing per shift and whether or not you should have, you know, nine people on each shift. Or is it based on call volume? Because they would do a call volume analysis. Whether or not it makes more sense to have 12 people on one shift, eight on another and seven on another. And so it's it's a lot more detailed. And part of that whole concept is to try to control your overtime by putting your resources where they need to be at the times when they need to be utilized. I don't know that we staffing capacity to actually do that type of a study in-house. So I don't know who would do that study. I just don't. You know, you you're, I think it's clear that we've cut the management analyst out of the budget for the last two years. So we don't have a management analyst to do that kind of a study. We don't have people who we can dedicate to do that type of study.
So my, I appreciate those those comments. I just think it's a, it's $120,000. We've seen a little bit of it. I'm not sure that we need to approve it tonight. It's I don't know that it's urgent, but I do think it would be valuable to have a little longer conversation about that and and have it include some community voices as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Just on this particular topic, Ms. Barry, have you made a decision?
Yeah.
Okay. Just in case anybody was watching, Ms. Barry and I were exchanging a note because she needed to consider whether or not to recuse on this topic. And when it comes to the actual this deeper discussion of this topic on the police and fire staffing needs, she will recuse. Normally, we don't pass notes for conversation because we have to have our conversation in public. But this was orthogonal to the actual activity of the board, but I want to make sure anybody who watched this understood. Ms. Hey?
I just, I want to follow up between Mr. Sandin and Mr. Malloy, and I can't remember exactly where it started now. But the comment about the fact that the study could potentially have been done by a management analyst within that role, but we don't have one, so maybe not. I'm just wondering, rather than the 120 for a single study, should we instead be funding a one-year analyst position? Which does a lot more for us globally throughout the year. I just, has that something we've considered? Because that is not a long-term ongoing commitment.
Yeah, no, it's not something that I considered as part of this review because one of the things you get and and I don't know that the Center for Public Safety Management is who would get the the project. I contacted them and said, this is what we're looking at. And can you give us a proposal and a ballpark price so that I know what for budgeting purposes, what we should be budgeting? The the issue is is that you want to get some, an organization like that. And that's why I said an RFQ, so that we look at the qualifications of the firm, not the bottom line price. Because Center for Public Safety Management is both analyst and then people who have who are retired police and fire chiefs and captains who have worked in large and small communities and can come in with that kind of experience so that they understand what kind of if you've ever looked at a fire police department schedule, you know, it's not quite like looking at the town manager's office schedule. It's totally different and it's very complicated and very complex. They understand that lingo. I think bringing in a one-year analyst is not going to be able to do that kind of work.
Thank you. So. So colleagues, I'm going to open this up some public comment also. But I want to make sure we've sort of worked our way through the general space. And I want to identify any items the board would like to consider not considering tonight. And I've heard from Mr. Sandin, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board whether or not that's the case before we we move to a final vote. But at this point, unless the board has more comments right now, I will ask for public comment. And then we'll come back to discuss, do we want to strip anything out? Okay? Or do you have comments right now?
I'll wait till after the public comment.
Ms. Barry, I'm sorry.
If I need some more information or would like more information?
I will come back to the board for more.
Okay.
More discussion, right? So if you if you want something right now, I'll give it to you.
I can wait.
All right. So now I will take public comment for a few minutes. I I see a hand up online and I see a member on the board standing. So we'll go online first, Mr. Shiple.
Thank you, Tom Shiple, 18 Finney Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. I have three separate short comments about the police and fire staffing need study, if that goes ahead. Actually, my first comment was already touched on by Mr. Sandin about in the RFP having something that about how social workers can be integrated into public safety. I know this is something that the police department is already considering. And I think having more of a holistic view on how to do that most efficiently and how that might change the workloads of other members of the public safety departments would be very useful. The second is I recognize that the the number of sworn officers hasn't changed much since the 1970s. We've been hearing that from the chief. But it would be great to understand as part of this study how the demands on policing have changed since then. For example, it's it's my impression from looking through some historical records that the the levels of juvenile delinquency and auto theft have dramatically declined in Lexington since then. But I'm on the flip side, I'm sure that there are other demands that have increased in in other ways. And so I hope that an RFP can ask for a long-range study of how crime and public safety statistics have changed over the decades in Lexington. And then lastly, I don't know if this is already contemplated, but it would be great to see the RFP asks for a couple of open community meetings, one in the beginning to gather input and a second towards the end to present a draft of the report to get feedback from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shiple. Coming into the room, the resident moving to the microphone. And if you could introduce yourself by name and address. And Mr. Shiple, did you give us your you did? Right, I was getting the timer going with.
Is this on?
Yes.
Don McKenna, 9 Hancock Street, Precinct 6, Town Meeting Member. So I was going to say a lot of what Mr. Lucente said, but he said it, so I'm not going to say it. What I am going to highlight is the question before you tonight is not whether these projects are worthy. The question is whether using ARPA funds is most appropriate. And as you each know, I met with each of you about where I think those funds need to go. You talked a little bit about it today. We've done a great job as a town approving $500,000 for the 250th. We need to approve the other $500,000 that's going to come forward. But you need to give money to the visitor center. You have not invested in your internal business that has opportunities for long-term economic development. And I was very disappointed to see that the visitor center revolving fund request is listed as not approved. Because I don't ever remember this board not approving it. I remember Mr. Malloy saying recently that they were withdrawing their request. But they are going to have to deal with all of the visitors that come. And that's what we built the visitor center for. And if they don't have the flexibility to adapt to a changing time as the the time goes on from this spring forward, they're not going to be in a position to do that. They have staffing needs, they need to purchase inventory, they need to offer additional additional tours, marketing, et cetera. So to approve any of these requests tonight? I mean, you didn't talk about one of them, which is a big one, which is the food waste piece. I appreciate that program, but we're not there. We're not going to be able to get to the whole town doing it. And that should be built into the budget, I think, as a long-term thing, but not now. So, you know, I will just say that how you vote on this is really what you're saying about policy. And if you allow this conversation to go against the three. Yep, yep, I'm finished. Yep. If you allow to go against what the the tenants that Mr. Lucente put forward, you're basically saying those didn't matter when you have a great need for the visitor center. And the last quick thing I want to say is the numbers that have been given, as Mrs. Barry said tonight, are very out of whack. We had a million people in 1976. The thought that there's only going to be 250,000 is not okay. Thank you very much.
All right. There's one more member of the public online, Ms. Overton.
Hi, thank you. Valerie Overton, she heard 25 Emerson Gardens. So I also wanted to respond to the the proposal for a study of staffing for public safety folks. And I, Mr. Sandin and Mr. Shiple both kind of said some of what I wanted to say. So I won't reiterate that, except to say that I do think that we need to kind of think about like what the evolving and future kind of mix of needs for different kinds of public health, public safety staff might look like in the future as opposed to, you know, our previous kind of models of of public safety and policing. But the thing that I would like to add is that the select board endorsed and town meeting passed a resolution or a series of resolutions about racial equity and other forms of of equity and disability inclusion in in integrating those considerations in everything that the town does. And so I would hope that an RFQ or RFP would include consideration of of racial equity and other forms of equity and inclusion considerations in the need for what kinds of mixes of staffing are required looking forward. And that the RFQ would ask for vendors qualifications in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overton. All right, colleagues, so we've heard from the public. We're back to Ms. Barry with the question she deferred.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So I know Ms. Hay raised a question about the blue box proposal. And since we do have the fire chief in the room and the recreation director in the room, I was wondering if they could both kind of update us on what a blue box actually is, what's in it, what it connects to, and, you know, the need the need for it at that location based on the number of people you see through there and the medical calls that you get.
Thank you. So the call box are hardwired to the dispatch. So it's not a cell or Wi-Fi or solar powered. It's goes right to dispatch. The nice thing about this is that you call 911, they answer. And if you need the AED, dispatch hits a button and the door opens and you immediately have an AED prior to emergency services coming. Currently, it's been in law for, I believe, five-plus years. All athletic programs through MIAA need to have an AED at every field, which has can be cumbersome for coaches, as well as there's currently two pieces of legislation in that by a certain time, all parks and open space, including conservation areas, will need an AED onsite, which will be an enormous undertaking. So right now, we've been prioritizing our two community parks. So this would probably be the last one we put on until we have a better understanding of the center recs permanent feel after the renovation. And as part of the Lincoln renovations, we do have one to be installed there as well. So it will help athletics, it will help everyone. But we also are going through town trying to find the hotspots of where cell phones aren't working. And many of it is when you're in a park. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hay.
So can you just clarify? Because it didn't say that in here. There actually the the AED is built into this call box?
Yes.
It's not independently existing already? So this is not just a phone box, it is actually the AED as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't clear.
Colleagues, other questions?
There aren't any questions. There's lots of comments again.
Sure.
You know, I I'll tell you why I'm torn. I absolutely think this needs to go, this money, you know, the larger share needs to go toward economic development. And we've already talked about that. My concern is the timeframe by which we're trying to go forward with this. And and, you know, we all feel, I believe, that there's, you know, a bit of a gun to our heads trying to get this spent before we don't have an opportunity to spend it. So I'm I'm just pointing that out that I'm very cognizant of that. However, I do think there's, you know, there is a case to be made that, you know, where maybe we haven't looked deep enough into some of the economic stimulus opportunities. You know, I just using the visitor center again as an example. That is going to be very busy over the next two years. And I'm not sure we've given them the support that they need. And I'll tell you a not an anecdote, because it was from a public meeting. The 250th Commission had decided a couple of months ago, we had a request from the Economic Development Office to spend $75,000 to buy merchandise. That was 250th related. The a lot of money that the 250th would get from that as, you know, from this proceeds of the sale is zero. So the 250th Commission gave $75,000 out of the $500,000 of ARPA that we got to the visitor center to to buy things for them to sell. That just seems to me to be opposite of what Ms. Barry and I both voted against it. The rest of the commission voted for it. But my point is, the commission is trying to help. We're picking from the same pockets. This just feels wrong, like this, this we're biting off our nose to spite our face sometimes. And we're not spending the way, you know, I think we intended to with the 500,000, which should have been really geared toward the 250th events and programming. And we're again, instead, spending money to help operate the visitor center and the tourism economy there. So I mean, I'm a little frustrated by the timeline that we have to live through on this, which was somewhat of a surprise. I think we all thought we had a little bit more time to spend. So I just wanted to express that I'm not, you know, just where I fall on some of these requests. Can we wait on the the police study till we get a little bit more information, have a deeper discussion as a board? Yeah, I don't think it doesn't seem to me that that has a hot-button timeline that it has to get done right now. Some of the other ones seem like, okay, that kind of fits in with the health and safety pieces. You know, thank you for filling in the blanks on the code blue call box, because that's helpful. I wish they also put an EpiPen in them. That would be great for those that are deathly allergic to bees. But I, you know, I I think there's some areas where we can maybe wait and pause and say, is this really what we want to do? You know, and I, again, the Tyler ERP cashing module, cashiering module. It's like, I I'm not thinking, oh, that's a great fit for ARPA right this minute. Maybe we can revisit it at a later time. Anyway, that's that's where I stand on some of this stuff.
So so let me to make us finish, right? I'm going to ask for proposals to pull things and see whether or not there's a majority of the board that wants to pull. And I'm going to go down in order. Anybody want to pull the fire nozzle? No. Anybody want to pull the fire hose? No. What about the radios? No. Fire Fire Prevention Office Furniture?
Yeah.
So we have two who would like to pull. Is there a majority? Three, okay, we'll pull it. The Hartwell Avenue Compost Site Water Main Extension. None. The Hartwell, the Health and Safety Equipment for Aquatics and Summer Staff. No. Code Blue Tower Call Box. No. The Police Fire Staffing Need Study, Ms. Barry has recused. We have two we can delay. All right. The Expanded Food Waste Program.
I think we need a sorry, I think we should have. I I will I will pull that for now. I think we need to talk about what the longer range plan is. I I think I've expressed this at other meetings. If we use this one-time money, you know, we're going to be going backwards, which I would hate to do in a in a future year. I think it's a difficult position that we might get put into.
So I see one member.
I would just say that actually, since we've used it one time, if we don't use it the second time, we're going backwards now. And if we go forward instead, it does give us the opportunity to seek grants and other options that may help to fray the cost moving forward. And I do think that this is an important element of of our operating budget. So I would like to see this. We talked about it when we talked about it and voted on it last. We did say it was something we would work to transition into the operating budget in FY '26. So I I would like to keep it.
Right. And my recollection is that we used money for one expansion. This is money for a second round of expansion. So, Mr. Sandin.
And following up on Ms. Hay's comments, my recollection is that the town manager felt that the next year's budget would be have enough room to do that. It's an opportunity to work on it, yes.
And and we also, when Mr. Pinzno was here, we said we may also start to see some difference potentially in the tipping fees as we get the organic waste out of the the stream.
Right, so I see one member looking to pull it. I don't see any others. Okay, stays. Vehicle for the Health Department. Everybody's fine. General Liability Insurance.
This one I see as a misfit personally.
As do I.
We have two. So, okay, we'll pull that one. The ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
I think ADA is incredibly important. It just seems like it's part of our normal operating plan.
We have done ADA assessments at our recreation facilities out of our operating budget, in fact.
Right, we we have done before and we proposed to put it in the budget this year and couldn't find the money. So just making sure you're you're saying we're not going to do it. Right, I mean, that's the choice.
I think it's right.
So there's three members who want to keep it? Then we're keeping it. The Tyler ERP Cashiering Module.
But I I don't believe that should be right now a decision we make tonight.
Delay. And the water sewer study. So yeah, I I heard delay on that one. And the water sewer study, rate study.
Again, it seems like normal operating business that we're and and I agree, we should be doing this study. I just think it's not a not a not a normal operating. It is a normal operating expense.
I need to hear things. So.
I'll agree.
All right, so we will delay, pull that one too. All right. So colleagues, I'm going to move the the following set. Or actually, it's going to be the table minus these elements. We're going to remove the Fire Prevention Officer Furniture, the Police and Fire Staffing Need Study, the General Liabilities Insurance Consultant, the Tyler ERP Cashiering Module, and the Water Sewer Rate Study. The I moved to approve the other requests as appeared in the table on our packet.
Second.
They moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous, five to zero. Thank you. So move on to item number five, which is the Fee Schedule for Recreation and Community Programs. Ms. Batit is here to fill us in on the recommended fee increases for the Recreation Department. In our packet, the material that In our packet, the material that is highlighted in green are where the, the increases are and the rest remains level. Ms. Batite, do you want to make any comments or should you just want the board to ask you questions?
Whatever you'd prefer, if there's any.
Well, just a point of, point of order. The folks at home can't see or hear necessarily who's speaking. So when you speak, if you could just say your name and.
Right, for town staff, right.
Okay. Would be okay if Christine joined me and we sat over there.
But our cameras aren't working well, so it's still, it'll just be voice for you.
Okay. Good evening. Melissa Batite, Director of Recreation and Community Programs. And with me is Christine Dean, the Community Center Director. This is our annual request that we come to the Recreation Committee and then onto the Select Board to review our programs and services and the fees associated with them. And as highlighted in the memo, we do a market analysis. We look at programs that are waitlisted, that we need to grow. We look at programs and services that we need to divest in and then look at the expenses that will naturally go up with cost of living and wage increases and things like that. So this year we are requesting increases in the following core service areas, which include aquatics and golf, tennis and pickleball, camps and clinics, adult programs and leagues, youth leagues, community center and outdoor recreation facilities. In our opinion, they're, they're very modest increases across the board. Some things, even if we did the cost recovery on it, would, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to charge what it actually would cost. So obviously some programs subsidize others. One new thing I did want to point out is on the last sheet, which is where we have our outdoor recreation facilities fee chart. This includes all of our athletic fields and hard courts, surfaces and other amenities at the park that we would rent out to groups and/or community members. And one of the things that we are working very hard on is to prepare for the five plus years of when the natural grass at Center Recreation will be offline, not only from a financial perspective, but in a way to prioritize our residents and our in-town programs and leagues that are sponsored. So in previous years, our Tier Three and Tier Four, the percentage of non-residents was higher. So we're moving towards that our Tier One and Two will naturally be able to be the priority on whatever fields are left in town. So that's why we, we highlighted that green there. And as well as we increased the fees for the lights for those tiers, should they use them, knowing that over the last few years, the athletic lights and the time that they're left on has been of concern to some of the abutting neighbors. So we wanted to make sure that if, if and when the lights are on, the Tier One and Two would be the priority, especially in the coming years. So all of the increases total yield sixty, just about $65,000, $64,000 in anticipated additional revenue.
Thank you, Ms. Batite. Mr. Lucente.
Thank you. Just one question on the swim team, all four sessions. That was the only one that sort of struck me as went up more than a small amount. Most of them seemed like it was 10% increases or, you know, something in that range. This one went up by $100 for the resident and by $110 for the non-resident. I just didn't know if there was something going on there that
Yeah.
that was a typo or if it was.
I actually would have to look up that particular one, Mr. Lucente. I'm not sure. It looks like they were, they were all increased, but let me double check that particular fee.
Like 35% increase or something in that range seemed high.
I don't know if Peter Coleman's online. He was going to try to call in. He may know that, but he's probably, may not have his paperwork in the car.
He is online. Mr. Coleman, I'm going to try to bring you.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're, you're on.
All right. My reception's a little spotty right now, so bear with me. If I start to break out, just, just let me know. But yes, so I think in previous years, to answer Ms. Lucente's question, swim team for the full, it's almost a sign up for all four sessions. There was a, I don't have the sheet in front of me right now, but there was a noticeable discount for someone to register for the entire summer. So we were just trying to bring that up by a small amount to be more reflective of the services that would be provided for the entire summer's worth of instruction.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes.
So just a follow-up. So I understand on that, and then I have a separate question. But the, so the two-week session is going to $90. And there are, are there four two-week sessions? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So it is still less than, it's still a discount from that. But I see where you're going. Okay, thank you. The other question that I had that's similar is the day camps. So the day camp, the day camp community center and the Minuteman Sports Clinic. And they, for the day camps, over the course of the, you know, the three or four years that are in the chart, it's gone up $100. And that seems a little, I don't know, steep as a trajectory coming out of, of the pandemic. So I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So the minimum wage is now at a minimum of $15 across the board. So that would be for our frontline first-time staff at 15 years old, as well as it's the accordion, it's a crunch. So all of those rates are meeting up to what our camp directors used to make, which would have been like 20 or 21. So across the board, wages have gone up. And we did a really deep dive into our expenses when we were deciding to reopen during 2020 and 2021. And one of the things that we realized with day camp is that when the camps go to the pool twice a week, we weren't accounting for recovering some of those expenses, as well as some of the other expenses that go up with day camp in general for supplies and equipment. And we've invested a lot in our training over the last couple of years. So really trying to make it really representative of what we're offering. I will say we are still low compared to our neighboring communities. And I will also add, which I know I've, I've shared many times, that our financial aid program is, is thriving and we're really proud of that. So I, I don't think anyone has been turned away other than from a waitlist based on fee.
Thank you. And actually, just the idea of scaling so that you can pay better wage and not just a minimum wage, but a better wage to the employees is always going to get me to say yes. So you're good.
Mr. Sandin.
So having booked some rooms recently at the community center, I was just wondering how things are recovering and how, how's it going?
We are recovering quite nicely. We're, we're really back to those pre, pre-pandemic numbers in terms of the requests and the meeting room use. So we still have that system in place where we are booking out three, you know, six months at a time at a three months, three-month time block so that we can make sure both the, the Human Services Department, as well as the Recreation Community Programs Department can schedule the building with all of our internal programming and meetings and services. But the, the public use is definitely thriving and doing well.
Good to hear, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Barry is their liaison and she's good. She just said to me. So I, if there's any member of the public who'd like to comment, this is your opportunity online. Raise your hand and in the meeting room, approach the microphone. Seeing no one, I will move the, to approve the 2024 recreation fees as presented and attached to the packet.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None. It is five, zero unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. And best of luck this season. I may need a job. So we'll move on to item number six, which is the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. And we have several presentations. Ms. Xw, do you want to set context or?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pato. So first, we'll, we'll have a couple of presentations and then I have some information on TMMI Info Night. So I'd like to first talk about Article 24. And Mr. Malloy is going to give an overview. We do have the motion in the packet, but we did not have materials other than the motion to put in. So he'll give you an overview. Thank you.
Mr. Malloy.
So we have held a single meeting with all of the staff, senior managers who would be involved, have a department who would be involved in the 250th. Ms. Barry and Mr. Lucente attended. And from that, what we did is we began putting together a budget utilizing, based on the $500,000 of ARPA funds and the proposed $500,000 of funding for, at this annual town meeting to identify exactly what those would be expended on. When we met on that day, we basically said, you know, think of anything you might possibly need. So the, I'm just going to call them the 250th Commission because that's easier than saying semi-quuincentennial over and over again. Lex 250. They have not voted on approving any of these. It was just for budgetary purposes of setting something up. And I won't run through them individually, but on the, of the $500,000 in ARPA funding, we had identified. What we did then is we took a look at it and said, which of these items could be under contract by December 31st of 2024? Which of these items, like overtime for the police department? We can't get that under contract in this calendar year. And those would be annual town meeting funded items. So by breaking it out that way, we came up with 449,936 that would be funded with the ARPA fund. Some of that's already been expended, but like I said, we have, this was a budgetary exercise. It wasn't to say this is what's approved and is that exactly going to happen? And then the annual town meeting funding came up to 563,092. Again, not all of these things will necessarily be funded. And so that's where we are. And if the board wanted me to, I could run through each one of these. But one of them that was noted in the ARPA request that you just approved was the Fire Communications Portable Radios. And it was in both places. And there was a notation in the far right column of the ARPA spreadsheet. Instead of it was funded through ARPA, then it would come off of here. And so that automatically puts it under $500,000 right there. And then there's some other items there as well that I don't know that we will fund or will fund it maybe differently. Instead of buying a golf cart, maybe we rent a golf cart during the events and things like that to keep the costs down. But that's where, that's where we're at on the numbers. We're slightly over, we worked slightly over 500,000 at 563. We're now at 493 for the annual town meeting budget purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Ms. Barry.
Just to clarify one thing there. So Mr. Malloy mentioned, you know, the 500,000 ARPA funding that this board approved, which we're very grateful for. The commission has already spent some of, or spent some of that money, as Mr. Lucente indicated, you know, 75,000 went to the visitor center to buy merchandise. And there are some other things that where we're planning, you know, it's already kind of like almost encumbered. So right now, the ARPA money that's available is closer to like 360, 370, you know. And what was identified for ARPA, I believe Mr. Malloy said, was almost 450. So we got to sharpen the pencil and the commission's definitely going to have to look at some fundraising. But the bottom line here is what's driving this is public safety. You know, Concord has set aside a $750,000 budget for their public safety for this event. We expect this to be a very significant event. You know, I think I mentioned to you all that I was at the Public Safety kickoff in the Mima bunker with the fire chief and some others. This is going to be a significant event. So.
So we hope, and I'm sure it will. Mr. Lucente.
I'll just, you know, add on, this may be obvious, but there's very little programming in the money that we've, as a board, said, hey, here's, you know, here's something to help guide the 250th. And it's caused some frustration on the commission because it's, you know, like we've had other discussions with other departments that have no budget. You know, it's what, what do you want us to do with zero, you know, to work with? So even, even having conversations about trying to fundraise, fundraising takes money. So we're in a little bit of a strange cycle of we need to invest in this to get the return on our investment, which is, you know, this is important that we, as a board, approve this. And I am realizing also that the rest of the board members haven't seen this chart Mr. Malloy was referring to. I don't think it was in the packet, but I think it would be important at some point to share. So you can see the details of, you know, the overtime requests from the police, fire, DPW and the Health Department and the Visitor Center staff that have all asked for financial help to run their operations, but also, you know, things like barricades and communications equipment, all things that you need to run a large-scale event.
Right. I mean, I think there is a, I, I would like to see some more detail, not that, in general. But I'm not sure I want to see specific detail about any of the public safety activities. I'm perfectly happy to have a relatively gross number in which you, you, you're going to be budgeting within it. I don't need to know all the details and I'm not, and I don't really want to see that in, in a public filing. So, so just responding to your suggestion that we should see a breakdown. Yes, it would be nice to see a breakdown, but let's see the breakdown more on those programmatic and ancillary activities. And Ms. Barry suggested that the lion's share of funding in Concord, or at least a significant fund amount, is really all around public safety. And I, I'd like that to be relatively coarse in what we see.
Yeah. So I, I just want to clarify, as I understand it, we essentially have, you know, at least mentally encumbered about a million dollars. And what I'm hearing is that that is largely for staffing and sort of infrastructure support. It is not events. It is not invitations. It is not, you know, activities and the other parts of this. It is the support for what we still need to plan and support. Is that right?
That's correct. And it was a very difficult conversation to have with the commission at our last meeting. But the commission is united and we need to fund the municipal part of this. We need to fund the staff and we need to fund the infrastructure to put the event on.
So we have heard several times from Senator Barrett and other people that supposedly there's going to be money from, coming from the state. Have we seen any indication that that's really materializing? Or is that really money that the state is similarly using for the infrastructure support?
So what has happened at the state level is very early on, we got a $50,000 earmark from Representative Sacolo. We were able to use about 39,000 of that. The majority of that was around kind of the kickoff, some legal fees and things to get us going. And then we were also able to get another $200,000 earmark from Senator Barrett. However, only 100,000 of that was set aside for this celebration. That has been fully allocated. We understand there is a $150,000 earmark from Representative Sacolo that was passed in the supplemental that was passed back in December. We have not yet seen that. Representative Sacolo cautioned us, she said, do not spend that money till you get the actual paperwork because several of those supplementals were clawed back by the governor. The governor has not yet clawed back anything related to the 250th because they're very much committed to it in their economic development plan. The state did approve two different tranches of a million dollars to go towards the 250th celebration. That is all sitting with the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism with Mott. They have hired a dedicated staff member, Sheila Green, who will be meeting with at our collaborative, upcoming collaborative meeting. She's also coming to Lexington for a visit. So they are, they're hiring a bunch of staff. They have just put out an RFP to do statewide marketing. They are spending money at their level. And what we are hearing is that none of that at the moment is going to trickle down to the cities and towns that are typically involved in this event along the battle road from Boston all the way out to Concord. And none of it is going to go to the regional CVBs for the regional CVBs, which are convention and visitor bureaus, to distribute it to towns in their, in their, in their communities. It's incredibly frustrating because It's incredibly frustrating because then we hear things like the state of New York has awarded 4 million, 4 million, 5 million to Saratoga because Saratoga will be doing the 250th in 2027. The state of Ohio has allocated, I think it's 8 million for when the 250th hits Ohio. Massachusetts, Sheila Green and Kate Fox from Mott were at that Hingham meeting I mentioned to you at the beginning of the meeting. They very much acknowledge the state of Massachusetts is behind in this and they're playing catch up. They think they're going to get there. But again, we don't have it here. We don't have really good assurances. We've heard there's nothing at the federal level at this time. So that's kind of where we are. We did testify back in October, the town of Lexington, the town of Concord, on a bill that Representative Sacolo from Lexington and Representative Cattaldo from Concord filed, looking for a million dollars for specifically for public safety for the two communities. That's stuck in committee. And based on what's going on at the state level, it's probably not going to go anywhere. So that's, that's where we are, unfortunately.
Mr. Lucente.
I just want to point out for the board, maybe obvious, but if we do get this earmark from Representative Sacolo that was put aside, we, we'd have this very short clock in which to spend it. You know, so we may not get it till March, in which case we had to spend it by end of June. And it's, that adds to some of the frustration and lack of flexibility, especially when the event, the big event is in 2025. So some of these funding avenues are actually not really as helpful as people might think. Oh, you got all this money. Well, we don't really get to spend it. So frustrating.
If I can just make one more acknowledgement. So there's been some frustration within the community from groups that want to be a part of this celebration with us of they're like, you have a million dollars. Can we get some to help, to help fund our event? And we can't do that right now. We just don't have the capacity to do that right now.
Right. I think, well, what I'm hearing in part is our warrant article is too low a number, but that's going to be the ceiling.
And that is what I told the appropriation committee last week. Yes.
Right. And, and the truth is that our budget wouldn't really allow for more, but I, I encourage you to work on that fundraising. All right. Any other questions or comments about Article 30? This was 24. Not at this stage. All right, let's move to Article 33. Is that correct, Ms. Xw?
Article 33, yes. So the board in the packet was the presentation slides, the motion, and the video was posted. So tonight's presentation is again, like it was last week, which is Ms. Elaine Tong is here to answer any questions on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Very good. So colleagues, Ms. Tong, if you want to come sit at the table of the two of you, right? And then the board will be able to just ask questions about this, and we will take public comment on it after. Colleagues? Comments or questions for Ms. Tong and? I don't know. Ms. Tong, did you have an update or is it just you're answering questions? Please, yeah, press the.
I'm happy to give you an update on what we've done so far. I want to thank you, first of all, the board for your strong support of the Affordable Housing Trust as well as Article 33. And we also want to acknowledge the strong work and a lot of hard work by town staff, Carol Kowalski, Raggy Ramachandran, and our RHO SO consultant, Liz Rust. In terms of what we've done so far, just this year, since January, we attended a DRT review meeting at the beginning of January that had the fire department, planning, police, building, health, engineering, sustainability and resilience zoning, town engineer, assistant administrator for land use, and the senior economic development coordinator, among others, in order to explore the feasibility of parcel 6844. In addition, we've met with the capital expenditures committee, the recreation committee, the, we're going to meet with appropriations committee this week. We're also meeting with the sustainability committee this week. And we have reached out to the Commission on Disability that will be meeting with a couple of weeks from now, as well as the Council on Aging Human Rights Committee, Greenways Corridor Committee. We've also met, I'm sorry, with the planning board. And we've reached out to the school committee, as well as the transportation advisory and the tree committee. We've also met with the Association of Black Citizens of Lexington, the Chinese American Association of Lexington, the Lexington Pride Coalition, as well as the Indian Americans of Lexington. And I have to follow back up with the other affinity groups that are on the list. We've also met with the Lexington Housing Assistant Board, the Lexington Housing Authority and Housing Partnership Board, all of whom have indicated that they will be providing a letter of support to the select board in the near future.
Thank you for that update. So colleagues, questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've also met with the neighbors. And we have an upcoming meeting with town meeting members at precincts five and six and the neighbors as well.
Thank you. So I have a question, but so I, I just want clarity on this particular motion and what you're asking for from town meeting, because we've gotten a lot of concern expressed from certain neighbors about the feasibility project, the paper project that you've presented. The request that's being made to town meeting is to allocate the land for affordable housing, which is one of the three purposes that the gift of the land from the state to the, to the town included. But it would be to choose that one purpose going forward and to give the select board authority to go forward with a RFP or their designee to move forward, looking for proposals for how to develop this for affordable housing. This is not a action for a particular project. It is not defining the scale of the project at this time. What you have shown is sort of a concept of what could be, but that's not what town meeting is voting on. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. So, so this is just to move us along the path to allow for pursuing affordable housing options at this location.
That is correct.
Okay, good. I, I thought that was it, but it was just a little unclear, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Colleagues, other, other questions? Ms. Hay.
So just following on to Mr. Pato's comment, so this is to authorize the select board to seek affordable housing. And then the process from there would in fact remain under the authority of the select board. It is not, this is no way authorizing our transfer into the Affordable Housing Trust. You are still acting as the bank for this project. And it would be up to this board to determine what elements would go into any RFP, what the terms would be, what the timing would be, what, and what the requirements would be. And then there would have to be, in addition, as there typically is when we receive responses to an RFP, a group that would be organized to review the RFP and pick what it is, if anything, if anything even gets submitted. And then from among what gets submitted, if anything fills all of the requirements, whether we would go forward. And then I know that, and just, I, I'm reiterating this to make sure that I'm understanding it. So you're going to correct me if I get anything wrong. But you also have mentioned in the slides, the idea of doing a lip project, but we don't know for sure that that is in fact what would come forward, right? It would still be, well, I guess that's actually a question for us. We could write our RFP to be open to any sort of funding model, as long as it is an all affordable project, because that is precisely what's in our goals, which I know we're coming to in the next item, but in all affordable housing that we could kickstart by 2025. So I guess, building on, you know, your concerns, Mr. Pato, of the, the letters we've received, this really is at a very nascent stage. We don't have any specific proposal. We don't have any specific form of funding, size of project, or even, you know, delineation within that. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Hay. So therefore, we feel that any further due diligence would be inappropriate at this time and would be better left up to the successful proponent, if there is one applicant, if there is one, to pay for and conduct as required under whatever process you choose to go through.
And, and arguably, actually even as part of an RFP. Is that right, Mr. Malloy? If we were to say that, you know, we needed you to do something that, I don't, whatever the, the provisions are, in order to meet them, the applicant would need to prove that they were compliant with those requirements. Is that right?
Yes, the board could put that right in. We could just put that right into the, probably an RFQ than an RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Colleagues, other comments or questions? All right. Since we have received a lot of comment, and I will say that there are a few members of the public who said they would, were unable to attend today, but they are, they had sent us several email messages. And I want to make sure everyone is aware that we're getting that. I'm opening up for comments from the public online and in the room. And we'll start online and we'll come back to the room. So I'd like to remind people to introduce yourself by name and address, and the limit will be two minutes, and I'm going to put a 10 minute limit on the, on this section. We'll start with Ms. Lang.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Daniella Lang. I'm a resident at 2OP Circle off of North Street. So first, I'd like to say that I support affordable housing. However, I do have concerns with the size of what has been proposed. First, I know Elaine did mention that there was a meeting with the neighbors. However, very few abutters and residents were notified via mail in early January. It was only 300 feet. Many of us were made aware by word of mouth from surrounding neighbors, which is concerning in and of itself and limits the community input. I believe for 116 Vine, more neighbors were notified, and that was a much smaller project. At the neighbor meeting, it was stated that the proposal included up to 51, 2, and 3 bedroom units, which is very large for this area. And I understand that we're still in the infancy stages, but I do want to call out that during that meeting, it was mentioned 51, 2, and 3 bedroom units. And I believe it was later stripped from that PowerPoint that was shared during that meeting. Some of my concerns with that is that it gravely impacts Fisk and Diamond School District. And Joe Pato, I would like to quote an open letter regarding effects of housing expansion on school enrollment that you wrote back in February of 2023, stating, growth that is spread across the community broadly is easier to absorb into the school system than same, same growth concentrated in one or two locations. And this is especially true for growth affecting elementary school students. I'd also like to just mention that this impacts the current ecosystem in the area. Many wildlife live here. We'd be looking to bulldoze three acres of wetlands and trees, which I would hope that Lexington would really consider against. Traffic, this area is already a high traffic area, especially during commuting hours, and a development of a large scale would only exasperate that situation. The area is not conducive to walking, as the Affordable Housing Trust has previously suggested. And there's lack of public transportation in this area. I would not consider the express a suitable option. Lastly, I, I know I'm at time. Lastly, I would just like to say, as a community that strives for DEI, I'd like to see us look at potentially a wider spread affordable housing development versus a larger scale single development to ensure that we are allowing those that will live in affordable housing to truly feel welcomed and included and immersed across the entire Lexington community. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Before I recognize the next person, just because my letter, open letter was quoted, I want to make clear that was in response to the MBTA Communities Act and that the scale of that development was on the order of 12 to 1500 units. That's the scale. I was talking about concentrated versus distributed or across the community. Now, 50 units was not what we were concerned about from an enrollment perspective. I'll move to the next person online. They'll come into the room and then back online. Ms. Katzenberg.
Hi, this is Barbara Katzenberg. I live at 37 Moon Hill Road. And I'm very excited about this project. It's right in line with what we want from our comprehensive plan, that we're going to provide a range of housing options. And, you know, although we're making some headway on affordable housing, you know, for example, by including inclusionary units and new multifamily developments and setting up the Affordable Housing Trust, these are incremental pieces, and we really need to do much better. Particularly, not just from an ethical perspective in terms of what our goals are, but also in order to stay above the 10% threshold of affordable housing in Lexington. I think this land's well suited for this project. I, you know, would just like to ask that we consider maybe building a sidewalk between this intersection and the nearby shopping center. That would be great for everybody who lived there. And I think as long as the development, you know, considers, you know, there are not so much wetlands on this property, but in adjoining properties. And I know that, you know, by law, we would be making sure that those wetlands are protected. And so I hope to see this get going on the next step. Thanks.
Thank you. Coming into the room, residents, please identify themselves by name and address.
Hello, my name is Pamela Lyons. I live at 51 Grand Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I urge the select board to not adopt the Affordable Housing Trust suggestion and instead actively pursue affordable housing on the Depot Square parking lot, which I note is my backyard. In other words, build the housing in the center where we have the mass transit, a far more robust system, which is located right here. Build the, build the affordable housing where we have the shopping. Don't build it out there for Woburn's benefit. Build it here. We're always trying to get people into the center. Now, I know the housing feasibility study identified some challenges at that site. And I'm also intimately aware of the importance of retaining the public parking. But these challenges are not insurmountable. Bring the people to the center. Bring them to my backyard. Also, there's a little bit of craziness here. We use CPA funds to buy precisely the kind of site we are now proposing to build on. If we had bought it, it would be wonderful, but apparently free for nothing, we're going to pave it over. If, if, I'm just throwing out your number, if you build 50 housing units, you're going to throw down about 100 parking spaces. Build it here where you won't need as many residential parking spaces. One of our issues in Lexington is while we're very progressive on sustainability and affordable housing, we are mired in 1975 when it comes to parking policy. We have a real opportunity here to move forward in a very creative way in parking, in affordable housing, in sustainability, and in transit. I, I understand the desire to do this, and we all love our own projects. But this, and also Depot Square, while the parking is very valuable, it's basically a gigantic eyesore in the middle of our town. Why would we? Yes, let's not keep that. Let us change that into affordable housing and more graceful parking. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I have time for two more comments online. We'll go to Jay's iPad. Please introduce yourself by name and, and address.
Yes, this is Jay. This is Jay Luger. I'm at 26 Renj Avenue, Precinct One, Town Meeting Member. For, I first want to say I agree with Pam Lyons about building affordable housing in the center, but I, I actually think we should do both. I think we should do Wall Street and the center. So the, one of the things that's been pointed out about this piece of land is that it doesn't have very good transit access. And when that's the case, and a lot of, a lot of times you'll hear, well, that can change, you know, that's not a permanent condition. But in this case, I, I really think we ought to be somewhat optimistic because I have been hearing things about improved transit access to that location. I have heard about the potential for a bus line that runs from Waltham through to Burlington. And I wasn't here for the early part of this meeting. I don't know if it came up, but I saw in Mr. Malloy's Town Manager update that he is discussing the town of Burlington, the extension of the Minuteman Bike Way to exactly that spot. So, and Barbara Katzenberg's comment about the sidewalk, I think that would be also a great thing to do. And finally, I just want to make a comment that we're going to hear a lot of reasons why it's a bad idea to build affordable housing on this spot. There's going to be a lot of meetings. There's going to be a lot of emails and letters to the editor. And some of it's probably going to sound somewhat reasonable and sincere. But I want everybody to remember that there's a large group of stakeholders in this endeavor that are not going to be coming to these meetings. And that's the people who don't live here yet, the people who would potentially live in these units, the people that are homeless because there's not enough housing in the state, the teachers who drive from New Hampshire to get to their jobs here. All those people are not coming to these meetings, and I think they would be in favor of this project. So I just wanted to keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, before I recognize what would have been the last speaker, I recognize that people in the room may not have realized you should have stood up so that I could tell. So I'm going to add two more speakers and extend the time, but you'll go one more online. And I believe there are two people who I see looking like they have. If you could just stand up, and I'll recognize the two of you, and then we will close the discussion here. I also want to remind everyone, this is not a Select Board decision. This is a Town Meeting article. The board is hearing comments, so we formulate our own opinions. But the debate on this is going to be at Town Meeting, and you will have your opportunity to contact Town Meeting members and sway the vote there as to what the decision will be. So I will go with the first person in the room here, then I'll recognize Ms. Manns online, and then the last speaker will be a second person in the room. All right, recognize in the room.
Hi, my name is Yuji Koga. I live over at 550 Lowell Street. For the past nine years, I'm about 15-second drive away from the location. I was not notified about this development. I'm here to voice my opinion on ATM 2024, Article 33, Lowell Street of Fourwell House Development. As a Lexington resident, as any Lexington resident in that area that have to turn left from any non-traffic lighted streets such as Thorough Road knows, especially during traffic hours, which is about four hours a day, it can take up to five minutes to turn left. As a Lowell Street resident, which is what I am, it can take up to five minutes just to turn left safely out of my driveway. Local streets near the proposed developments such as Thorough Road, North Street, Emerson Street, have all seen increased traffic from drivers looking to save a minute from their commute to drive through their streets. When I walk my dog after work, due to the number of vehicles that are stuck in traffic, I now wear a mask when I walk my dog. People talked about sidewalks. That's great, but if cars aren't moving, then you've got a lot of exhaust fumes that are coming into our homes. My children, who attend Fisk Elementary, have shifted away from taking the school bus because the bus oftentimes arrives at school after the bell. So we now drive our kids to the school. By building affordable, especially affordable-only development alongside the Burlington, also Woburn property lines, the closest shopping playgrounds and other town facilities is not in Lexington. Well, residents there feel like they're actually part of the community. East Lexington residents have already suffered from over two years of road construction. I'm unable to plant anything alongside my street because I have asphalt debris, as well as tubes sticking out. So I'm not against affordable housing in Lexington. I'm against making decisions without being involved. Again, 15 seconds away from the location. There has been no attempt from the AHT to reach out to me. So I appreciate it.
And Ms. Manns online? Ms. Manns, if you can unmute yourself.
Sorry. I'm Wendy Manns. I live at 3 Captain Parker Arms, and I am currently Chair of the Housing Partnership, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Partnership Board this evening. We wish to express our strong support of Warren Article 33. We understand that this article authorizes the Select Board to sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of a parcel of land on North Street, which was given to the town for purposes including housing, and further authorizes the board, or it's designated, to enter into a land disposition agreement. The Housing Partnership Board has been gratified to see the town begin to take action on specific projects, which will increase our stock of affordable housing, and recognizes this article as an early step of the board in cooperation with the Community Preservation Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust to do that. We understand that approval of this article will allow the issuance of an RFP to private affordable housing developers to submit proposals for the creation of units of affordable housing on this site, and that such proposals must take into consideration the available developable land, the terrain and vegetation, the provision of town services, and planning for any increase in traffic, and also use of public transportation, all reviewable by the Planning Board. We anticipate a process of several years to arrive at a plan that will contribute as much as possible to our severe housing needs, while recognizing legitimate concerns of town residents, particularly the immediate neighbors of the site. We applaud this necessary first step, and we will urge Town Meeting to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manns. And for the final comment in the room?
Good evening. My name is Nico Gallinelli. I live at 1 Opie Circle. I went to Fisk High School, sorry, Fisk Elementary School. I went to Diamond. I graduated Lexington High School. I'm still here. I've lived at 1 Opie Circle my entire life. I've never been able to ride my bike to Fisk or Diamond. I've never been able to walk to either of those two schools. I've never been able to roll a blade to the center. Anytime I had to go to the center, I either had to get a ride from my mother or take the Luxpress, and she never would let me. To build in this neighborhood, community housing, I'm the very first person that would tell you, this is not where the community is going to feel part of Lexington. I don't. I lived there all my life. I went to Burlington or Woburn because it was easier. I urge you to find better locations, even if it's harder. It is better for this town. If you want to bring people here and make them feel a part of this town, they can't because they can't buy these $2 million homes. Do what the developers are doing. Build something in town. Let them feel a part of this community. That corner is just not. Again, I'm not for affordable housing. The scale and the mass and the size of what wants to be put there is going to cause more problems and going to take those people and move them to, everyone will go to Burlington. They will not come to Lexington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallinelli. All right, colleagues, any last questions or comments? Mr. Sandin?
I just wanted to say thank you to Elaine, and Linda, who also, Linda Proznitz, who's also been working day and night on this issue to try to reach out to as many people as possible, and rarely do we see people who are as hardworking in volunteer organizations. There's plenty of very hardworking people, but this is just want to thank you so much for all the work you're doing, and for reaching out to the neighbors, as well as all the other affinity groups.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. And so we will move on to our next item. Ms. Axtell?
Yes, I'd like to just give a quick update before you look at the positions chart. I met with the Chair and Vice Chair of TMA this afternoon and wanted to give the board an update that we are looking at and creating two nights of Information Night, March 12th and March 14th. March 12th will be in-person over at the Lexington Science Hall. The Lexington High School Science Hall has been reserved, and then the 14th will be virtual. So we are putting together an agenda. There's going to be a survey going out there, putting all of that together. But just wanted to let the board know that we are working towards that and communicating back and forth with what Town Meeting members would like to hear more about. They're also going to be encouraged to come to the Select Board meetings, the Planning Board hearings, all of the prep information. So that process has begun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Axtell. And Mr. Cantor, you have your hand up. Do you have something about procedural issues? We will keep going. Mr. Cantor, I'll check in with you in a few minutes. So colleagues, you have we've concluded the discussion of article items. The last item is the assignments I made for article presenters at Town Meeting from the board. As you know, this is work that is done largely by town staff. Then the board then shepherds a particular article through Town Meeting. I chose to assign items based on liaison relationships primarily, and then tried to balance the number of items. I may have made a choice that you would prefer to change, so look it over. Contact me offline, and we can bargain swaps of articles if you would like. Does anybody know of something they don't want to be doing that I assign them at this stage? Ms. Barry?
Clarifying question. So as Chair of the Library Trustees, I would like to do the library articles.
I thought I did that.
Well, one sits in CPC, and I'm not sure where the other one sits.
Yes, and I gave Mr. Sandin CPC as a whole because he's a member of the CPC for the
And I think those articles, Mr. Malloy, Ms. Axtell, those articles are coming up together, correct? The library, because it's CPC and, yeah.
Right, so I think when we do the, it's the TRP item, right, for the library. Ms. Barry, if you could take the lead on that, that would make sense.
Thank you.
All right. That's, so as I said, if there's something you would like to swap, let me know, and then we'll swap offline. This is not a a decision of the board, so it's not an open-meeting law issue. All right. Lastly, yes, last item. We'll move now to the board discussion of our goal-setting meeting report. So colleagues, during the fall, and members.
I'm sorry, were we going to take any positions tonight? Just so that, I don't know if we wanted to, to get jump-started?
Is anybody ready? There are several that I'm ready on. Let's let me pull up this spreadsheet. Tell you what, actually, I don't want to do that tonight. What I'm going to ask is for you to submit any early positions you have to Ms. Katzenbach so that she can populate the spreadsheet for our next meeting, and then we will go through them at that time. Ms. Katzenbach, right, who maintains our spreadsheet. And then we will go through that in our public meeting, but it will be preceded with board members' comments. Selections, not comments. So let's, Ms. Barry?
Consent agenda items? Do we want to talk about those?
Again, send in your, Ms. Axtell will have.
We are putting the proposed consent agenda together now. However, we have to wait for the financial motions to just be solidified, and then those will come through all the boards for your yes or no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, that makes more sense than each of us putting in a thing. That way, we will be pulling things off and hopefully leaving as much as possible on it. All right. Let's move to item number seven, which is our goal-setting meeting report. So during the fall of 2023, the board engaged John Wortman, a professional consultant, to interview staff and town committees to gather input for our upcoming two-year goal set. The board met on the 11th of October to review these aspirations that were presented from both staff and committees, and identified the board's top set of priorities informed by that information. Each goal was assigned to one member of the board, with a second member volunteering on some to assist as needed. During November and December, board members worked with Mr. Wortman to identify measurable actions against those goals. They did this independently. So the board is, for the first time, having the opportunity to review those more detailed actions. So our task tonight is to take a first-pass examination and a light examination of these items, and we will have our final review and adoption at our meeting on February 12th. And so tonight is to make sure that we are aware of how we each interpreted the goals that we talked about into actions, to make sure that we are, if we have any questions about those actions before we commit them as a plan. So I will open this up for general discussion. Mr. Sandin?
Just a question. So just for the community to understand, how long would these goals be operational?
So this is a two-year goal set for fiscal years 2024 and 25. We are, of course, already in fiscal year 24 halfway, but we've been running about six months late in setting our goals. Right, and also to clarify, once we've gone through this, we will then set Mr. Malloy's, the Town Manager's actionable goals for the next year. So if nobody has initial comments, I'm going to go to take these in order. And we'll start with item number one, which was assigned to Ms. Hay, and Mr. Sandin was assisting. It's a vibrant community, to create a vibrant community by increasing housing in both diversity and diversity of stock and price. I need to reword some of these so that they roll off the tongue a little bit. I think we can say the same thing in slightly easier language. So Ms. Hay, if you're the primary, can you just run through what your target?
Yes, so item one under this, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, is to actually find an affordable housing project that we can really get going on.
Yes, we have a second mic that's generating feedback in the room.
Okay, thank you. So it was to identify and support a largely or exclusively affordable housing project that the town could control and begin implementation within the next 12 months. And one possibility is what we just heard, and will be in Article 33. Another is what we studied through the Affordable Housing Study that we reviewed just a couple weeks ago, I think. I think it was in January. And so, and continuing to look at those opportunities. So that is underway. The second is to increase the awareness of the Lex Hab Legacy Campaign, with the goal of increasing participation year over year in each of the next two years, using 2023 as the benchmark. And for those who don't know, the Legacy Campaign is the ability to actually leave your home to Lex Hab either entirely or at your basis, and allow it to become part of the affordable housing stock of the community. And I'm not a tax lawyer, but I will say the reason it's a legacy is that there are actually tax-advantaged reasons for doing this. The third is to continue to identify and evaluate town properties for possible affordable or mixed-income housing. Again, we're in process. Site lowercase a above, and then exploring options to increase our workforce housing. We do have a small amount of it in town, but it is something that is a real missing need for the community, and it goes both to a housing need, but also to the fabric of the community. the fabric of the community, which really suffers. And I have said this several times, but, you know, my kids' teachers, half the school lived in Lexington, and that's just not true in the elementary schools anymore. And in all of our other, you know, service departments as well, from, you know, or the this building to every other building. We have very little of our staff that still live in town, and that is a loss for the community. So I think those are the quick rundown.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. And again, this is for all of us to be able to understand them and absorb them, and then we'll come back at our next meeting, too.
Mr. Pato, were you expecting comments from the board on?
You have your opportunity to.
Take time that you didn't have it planned, but.
No, it's it's whether or not you want to get home tonight.
Just particularly with the workforce housing, I wish, and I know we've heard multiple times that it's not easy, but I'm hopeful that we can figure out some paths toward homeownership opportunities and not just rental opportunities. And I would love that to be part of our increasing our housing diversity, stock and price goal as an identified action item.
So I like that a lot, actually, and I would be perfectly happy. Are you in in D, we certainly can say explore options for increased workforce housing, including ownership opportunity. Or are you looking more to, when we say in in the number one above, in both diversity of stock and price, that was sort of in the idea that the the price of the property, as well as the the size and location of the property, was supposed to be inclusive. I can be more, you know, more detailed. I was trying to be broad to say that we're looking at diversifying the size of the of individual units, the size of homes, the diversity of mode, you know, are we looking at single family, two families, triplexes? Are we looking at multifamily? That's sort of where I meant in stock and in diversity of price, I am talking about, you know, going from true low income, like truly low income, through that sort of missing middle and up to market rate.
I think the word ownership is important.
No, I agree. I'm asking whether you want it in both places or whether you think it's clear.
I think it's fine if we have it in one place. I just don't want to not have the word.
Totally agree.
That's my personal opinion, and I'm not.
No, no, I agree with you, and I think it's a, it's a good point. We should have it in there. So thank you. We will make that change.
Mr. Sandin?
And I would agree.
Sounds good. Moving on to the second one, which is mine, with Mr. Sandin assisting, and this is to recognize and minimize issues around construction, preserving quality of life. And the action items under here are to revise the noise bylaw to remove ambiguities about construction techniques and the need for mitigation plans for consideration at the annual town meeting 2024. And we do have a article on the warrant with those proposed changes. The second i- item is to reconstitute the Noise Advisory Committee and create a process for revising the noise bylaw to establish noise limits appropriate to location or activity and clarify enforcement to be completed no later than the annual town meeting of 2025, which is feeling more and more of a stretch, but we do have a draft for the Noise Committee charge, which I think we will be able to finalize in the next few weeks. And the third item is to create incentives to preserve tree canopy and consider additional limits on tree removal while balancing the need for development to be considered no later than the annual town meeting of 2025. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to number three, which is Mr. Usante.
Yep, so mine was to create a vibrant downtown. And the first item from the list is to prioritize the list of most impactful ideas generated by the board and community, including the Fall 2023 workshops. And the board should know that this is coming up on a future agenda in the next few weeks to have the report from the consultants. Second is to identify how many ideas can be actually executed from that between now and December of 2025. Next is to actually execute on those ideas. Next is to improve tourist traffic by 10% independent of our 250th events. The idea behind that was to, to, you know, what can we do to improve our tourist economy? And maybe we can go well beyond 10%. The 250th, you know, I think much like what happened at the 200th, there was a a big boost in interest in Lexington. And, you know, we saw lots of people for that timeframe. I think we need to focus on continuing that outreach nationally, internationally, to get people to come here. Next is to increase tourist-focused social media. Next is to create incentives to keep our downtown properties occupied. We have a lot of empty storefronts, and we need to look at ways to create incentives to keep those properties filled with businesses. Last is to complete streamlining of sign approval process, which we're working on, and some of that's coming before us at this town meeting, but there's more that needs to be done. It's clear, even from the proposal for this year, that this is is a work in progress.
Thank you, Mr. Usante. And I just assume on on item D, which is improving 10%, that's by the end of this goal period?
You know, that that's a good question, but I feel like that's going to be a no-brainer. So I think it could go beyond that, but we we've seen a dip in tourist traffic from the pandemic, and it hasn't quite come back to what it was historically. So we need to, and figure out how do we invest properly to make sure that we get the tourists here.
Right, just to make it measurable, if you could, you could clarify over time where it is, and that'll that'll be helpful. Other, Mr. Sandin?
And it's just very minor on on D again, you said 250 events for people who aren't at this table, they might not realize you're talking about the 250th celebration. And so other, we need to write it so that people who are not as tightly involved would know what we're talking about.
Thank you. Well noted.
Ms. Barry?
Um, so, Mr. Usante, I don't know what's going to come out of your update when it comes at our future meeting, but I'm just wondering, F gets me thinking about, we have create incentives to keep downtown properties occupied. One thing I notice when, um, your microphone's on, so we have feedback, sorry. When I'm walking to and from work to the bank is, there's a significant number of properties that have peeling paint and or, I don't want to say they're falling into disarray, but I don't know what we could do to create incentives or to encourage property owners to keep, take, maintain.
So maybe just for goal purposes, we change this to create incentives to keep downtown properties occupied and well maintained?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that. I mean, I I don't know what we can.
I think it's a good point, because that has come up over the years that, you know, people get really frustrated. Other business owners are trying to do their part, and the neighbors aren't, and it. I will give a quick little preview for the report, but this is one of the issues in the report, that those are the things that throw off folks wanting to come to the center to shop, because they don't, you know, if you see something that looks like a disheveled store, you think, oh, it's all, there's nothing for me here. I'm going to go to the mall somewhere else. So these are important, very important.
Is there a way to combine B and C?
Yes.
I think you just executed on the one. Okay. Any other comments or or questions? Okay, moving on to item number four, and then for the public's benefit, these are ordered in what the board considered its priority order. So item number four is to improve efficiency of communications and meetings, and more broadly with staff. That is my primary goal, along with Ms. Barry assisting. This is, the items include consistent inclusion of select board's key concerns and materials for meetings. And this to update the critical information request sheet that we've provided for staff in the past, and make sure that all item presenters are given this guide before they submit packet materials. Guidance and update to be completed by January 2024, and I'll say I'm slightly remiss where this won't happen until the end of February, but in that, around then.
Maybe you say spring.
Spring, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there are a few other things on my plate for the end of February. B is to keep the select board current on key concerns and initiatives for each town committee. And the plan here is for the select board liaison or point of contact to provide a summary statement with the top three concerns for each of their committees at least twice a year. And I'll be suggesting a schedule, which you will then tell me I'm wrong, and you can correct, but but that we will have established a schedule for you to meet. And C is for committee members to be aware of the of the activity of and opportunities with other committees. Do this by reinstating a committee chair plus one breakfast meeting or or other time of day to provide a venue for semi-formal sharing of activities. And the first session that we would like to have occur is after this annual town meeting of 2024, so sometime in the late spring, to be conducted then at least annually in consultation with committee membership as to frequency. The. Nope, okay, so we'll move to number five, which is Mr. Sandin.
So the town had, on a number of occasions, says in the select board have approved sustainable action plans, getting to net zero emissions plans, essentially 100% renewable energy here is is a way to sort of capture the ideas coming out of those plans. And essentially, rather than going through every one of these items in detail, I think there's three main ideas here in terms of getting to zero emissions, and one is that we need to be operating on 100% renewable electricity, and one of the main ways to do that is by electrifying everything. And one of the things that we have been doing in Lexington for a while, as Ms. Hay mentioned earlier tonight, is a leadership position that sort of provides some ability for other towns throughout the Commonwealth to see that these things are possible and move the whole state forward. And so each of the items underneath these A, B, and C ideas, transition, electrify everything, and municipal leadership have been reviewed with the town manager, the Sustainability and Resilience Officer, and the Sustainable Lexington Committee. And they're, uh, think that these are reasonable goals and achievable.
More question.
Ms. Barry?
So, Mr. Sandin, you, when you talk about adding, switching, converting, well, the converting one's easy because it says 600 homes. But when you say, you know, add four megawatts of solar energy installations per year, you mean within the community, not necessarily within the municipality?
Correct. The these are, these are, these are not municipal goals. These are are townwide goals. So this is the sort of the way we're, when we think about this, when you think about the energy used in the town and the emissions generated by the town, there's about 2% of the emissions are Lexington schools and buildings, and the rest, if we're really going to make a difference, need to be focused on the other 98%.
Okay, so I think maybe some of the wording needs to be adjusted here. Because like under B to add 700 electric vehicles per year, what does that mean? Are we buying them for people? Or is it encouraging?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think the wording here is very important. Yeah, because we're not adding them to the fleet.
We don't have.
We don't have a fleet, right?
Well, we'd have quite the fleet then, yeah, yeah.
So so I think following up on Ms. Barry's concern, I think these are ambition for the community as a whole. And the goal from a municipal activity is creating programs or creating communication that makes people more aware. And you're measuring the success on, you know, have we created the incentive and nudge people to get this? Because we're not actually going to do that, right? Okay, so if you could reword that a little bit so that someone reading this cold will.
Yeah, but there, but there's a mix, right? So if you look at electrify everything, you know, Roman numerals three, four, and five are within our control. It's one and two that need to be modified by encourage.
So so for example, in in B1, convert 600 homes per year to heat pumps to Mr. Pato's idea, the town has started this Heat Smart Advisor program as a way to sort of help those kitchen table decisions get made in a positive way.
Right, right. And so then reporting on that, the success of that program would be part of this.
So it may be, just if I can jump in, like, market may be easier if you divide up under some of these that you have, encourage the following, do the following, essentially.
Or identify community versus municipal.
Yep. Great. Any other comments or questions on Mr. Sandin's? We'll go back to Mr. Usante, number six.
Did, Mr. Sandin, did you ask your municipal leadership one? I did?
Yes.
All right, okay. So the next set of goals are for advancing age and community initiative for Lexington seniors. And part A was to implement progressive property tax relief for seniors. Develop a policy to cap property tax increases for long-term senior residents, ensuring their financial stability in their current homes. I will note that at the MMA conference, this was the Mass Municipal Association, for those that don't know what MMA is. That was a topic that came up in the finance meeting that I had went to. It was, it was a brought up in the governor's bill to allow communities to have a little bit more flexibility in this area. So that might be a goal that comes much easier for us without a home rule petition. Second is to develop a senior home adaptation and assistance program. The idea behind this is the seniors that just maybe not able to handle, you know, a small problem or challenge that they're facing at home, and it forces them to feel like they've got to move when all they really need is a ramp, or they need a handrail. And these small changes that will allow people to stay in their homes longer. Statistics show that people that stay in their homes longer have better outcomes. Next is to expand accessible housing development. This would be us partnering with developers and housing authorities to increase the construction of senior-friendly housing units focused on accessibility and affordability. We did hear this presentation this evening, didn't actually have an idea of if the 50 units that were posed may or may not happen, or if they'll be senior-based or family-based or what. But I think one of our goals to try to, we're, there's a waiting list, but there's also a large waiting list for seniors who want to get into home homes and affordable units, and I think that's really important that we look at opportunities there. The last item in this list is to facilitate access to financial planning resources, offering workshops and resources on financial literacy and retirement planning, assisting seniors and managing their finances effectively for long-term residency. Another theme that I've heard in in my roles, not only on the Fund for Lexington, but in some of the working relationships that these are, these are helpful. Not everyone has the skill sets to be able to budget properly to stay in Lexington.
Thank you, Mr. Usante. So I think these are really good targets. I have a couple of caveat. One is on the first one, implementing the progressive property tax relief. At this point, we don't have a vehicle for that, so I think while the governor is proposing something that doesn't exist, it it would have to be a home rule petition. And for a two-year goal, I think the implementation of it seems unlikely. So I'd rather cast it as, you know, put us on the road and get the the necessary steps to get there. And then for a few of these other ones in turn. The, I'm just concerned about the providing financial aid for home modifications and for ex, well, that one in particular, B, that it's not something we've budgeted for this year. So we need to sort of figure out, you know, what's the plan to get there, and then how do we start working it into budgets? And you, so maybe the key word is develop, right?
Yeah.
And.
And that's, that was, when I wrote that, it was, develop was the key, because we have nothing now. So it'd be coming up with what are the program requirements, how would it get funded, you know, all that has to be decided and and.
Right, so so my only concern is that someone reading it might think that, you know, we we think we'll have more done within two years, and I'm a little want to set expectations at the right point, because I want us to do it, but I don't want people to be frustrated that, you know, we didn't do what they thought we were doing.
Could you maybe help suggest what would you?
Work towards establishment.
Okay, I can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I can work with you offline on, and Ms. Hay.
To to me, it's, um, yeah, I hope the board feels this way as well, but I I. To, to me, it's, um, yeah, I hope the board feels this way as well, but I, I think this is one of potentially low hanging fruit items that we could actually implement and have some success with, but does need a funding source, which may be charitable. You know, sources that create it, but having the town as the centerpiece for is also very important because there's some trust that gets established with having the town.
Right.
Help our seniors.
Right. And understanding what kind of staffing burden was required to make this successful.
So I will say back pre-pandemic, Mr. Pato, you and I were at a conference together where they talked about, there is an AARP program that does this where you can actually provide sort of training. They do the training, but you provide the people who want to be trained. So, you know, local contractors and such, but there's also information, I believe, about this in the senior study that we did with the Collins Center several years ago, exactly the age-friendly community. So I think there's some starting steps and guide points for, for how we might cover it.
Mr. Sandin?
So I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Pato on reading six A. I was reading it as if I was somebody as, as a resident who isn't familiar with state law would read it as saying, this must be possible if they're taking it as a goal, that it is something that exists today that we just haven't implemented. So do, do we say advocate for? You know, I don't know, something along that lines. That's, that's where I was.
I, I think Mr. Lucente's goal is a little stronger than just advocate because he wants us to, you know, bring to town meeting, for example, a path on this that would have to go to the state. It's just.
I, I just wanted to be clear that this is, that, that law needs to change in order to make this possible.
Yeah. And we're not the only ones asking for something like this, which is why the governor's added this to her recent bill. So I, I think, again, this may get a lot easier than, than we think in the next 12 months. So, but I also would, I don't want to just sit and wait and see what the state does because that doesn't always prove to be helpful. And, um, all right. Yep. Thank you for the comments. I appreciate it.
And thank you for this target. Any other on this one? Okay. And the, the last one is Ms. Barry.
So a lot has changed since this was written.
Right.
Um, and I don't know why is capital, the second word there is all in capital letters. Anyway, um, when this was written, the school building committee wasn't as far down the path as they are now. They had not set up all their working groups. They hadn't had all their meetings and made all their diagrams of everything that intersected and all that. So this one needs almost a, a whole rewrite. Or, or there's some parts that we could salvage, but it, there's a lot here that needs to be possibly potentially rewritten or just taken out. The goal here is, okay. Imagine you don't sit at the table, you're not involved in town government, you just live in Lexington. Okay. You hear there's this high school project, you go on the town website. How do you find out anything about it? Now, this evening, Mr. Pato mentioned, there's this other website that has kind of a complicated URL. But there should be a way that we are partnering with the school department and the school building committee to get this information out there because we are partners in this. You know, what, and you can assign a percentage, whether you want to say 75% or 90% of this is on the school department and the school committee. But ultimately the funding comes from this side of the fence or the wall, and it's the wall. But from this side, and I think there needs to be an education piece that lives within the town website that talks about this, that talks about, you know, would have a link to their page with all their updates because they now are posting all their agendas. There, and their minutes are there. But I think it also needs to have, you know, the bottom line from the forum on Saturday that Ms. Hay was at and Mr. Pato attended. And I think Mr. Sandin and Mr. Lucente, I think I heard you both say you watched online, is when they started talking about the high school project, everybody dialed it down really personally to like, tell me what, how much this is for me. Tell me the bottom line. And I know we're not to the point yet where we can put a calculator online for people to figure it out. But that's where this should be progressing to. And for people to also understand how the capital stabilization fund works and what we're doing to try and, you know, save and make it less of an impact. Because it's going to take everybody to get this passed. That's kind of the.
So, so Ms. Barry, you're, you're absolutely right. The good news is that, as you said, the, the school building committee has been getting itself further along from the early stages of just getting us to the MSBA. And now to building a communications subgroup, uh, which is working on various paths forward for how to get the public as a whole aware. And there's already been a discussion about, you know, how to get access from the town side to the, uh, to information about the school. It's not all implemented yet, right? So you are absolutely right. Our goal is to make, keep our eyes on that to make sure it happens. The good part is there are worker bees that are tasked with this. And it seems to be making progress, uh, including, you know, using uh, non-electronic forms of communication, townwide mailers. There's already been one townwide mailer for community forum, and there will be the second one. And the goal of that second one is really to make sure everyone has gotten that URL at home, including a QR code if they don't want to type.
But you got to remember too, and I know we tend to forget this at this table. There are people that are not going to go on a website and there are people that are not going to even know what a QR code is.
Right. No, no, no. So, so I'm using those as examples of communications. There's going to be continuing a, a variety of paths. And our task, and I think our goal is to make sure that they don't go by the wayside, right? But it's the, the operational activity is being driven out of the school building committee.
Correct. Well, yeah, but we need to find a way to communicate it from the municipal side. Make it easier for people to understand.
Right. And, you know, the school building committee has a number of, of municipal participants, right? It is not just the school department. All right. But, but I think the important thing here is for us to continuously remember this is the elephant that is actually a meteor or a, a moon. It is the largest project this community has ever contemplated undertaking. Even adjusted for inflation, I believe. So it is something we have to keep in our minds all the time. All right. So I, I've heard a number of, uh, small edits. If you could edit your own piece and send them back in, Mr., and then, uh, any, you know, any additional thoughts that come to mind for your colleagues component? Send those in and we will revisit this on the 12th, I believe.
So you need edits like tomorrow?
Uh, yeah. So we need edits like tomorrow and I'll make sure it actually is on the 12th. It is on the 12th. Yeah. So, um, comments by Thursday so that they can be added to the packet.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, not tomorrow. Right. That, that lost what day of the week we were at.
Thursday's the deadline. So you're asking for it on Wednesday.
Yes, I'm asking for it on Wednesday. And Mr. Sandin, you had a comment.
So I had, I had two comments. We didn't get to the last part of this goal-setting session, which says, uh, all goals will be reevaluated under the lenses, including. And there are three letters, D E I, which could mean just about anything to anybody. And I'm wondering whether we might spell out more like, you know, through the lens of the systemic racism resolution, you know, that.
More than that, though.
So, so, uh, yes. So, but this is why I think we should say, we should elaborate a little bit because you and I may have different ideas of what DEI is. And if, if the two of us have different ideas, we have 33,000 different ideas of what DEI may mean. We should perhaps spell this out a little bit more.
So, uh, right. I think that this refers to the equity and inclusion framework that staff have offered to us to look at. And, and refers back to those, uh, resolutions from town meeting.
For me, for me, it was, the, the reason I brought this up in the goal-setting session was that it was similar to the considering health in all decisions. It was considering diversity, equity, inclusion in all decisions is really where I was coming from on this.
So I will say, because you and I both were on this, but we have an entire page on our website that defines what our goals and our standards are for this. I mean, it says, you know, Lexington's diversity, equity, inclusion work. We are committed to fostering a diverse, inclusive, equitable community that thrives on the principles of respect, dignity and fairness. We recognize diversity enriches our community, brings together unique perspectives and strengthens our ability to effectively serve our residents. It goes on, but that's the opener. And I think that's what we're tagging to. So I'm happy to tag it back to that.
Something like that.
To that page, but I think for consistency's sake, and I will say Ms. Extell and I, uh, and Ms. Stenbridge and Ms. Intras worked that out many years ago now, um, long before we had a chief equity officer. And I actually think it does encompass really where we want to be. So I would say, rather than trying to create a different thing for this board, we should be consistent with what we're saying is the goal of the community.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just think that just leaving three letters could be open to misinterpretation. To Ms. Barry and Ms. Hayes' comments about my goals, uh, as I sort of processing it, let me just propose one solution to your idea, which is under B, three, four, and five, what if they all just moved under municipal leadership? And then then, then the other ones could be clear, more clearly identified as community goals.
As long as you spell that out.
So, so I, I'm actually looking at this and thinking by Wednesday that you want an extra week instead of having it on the 12th, that we defer this to the end of the month? To give.
Can I just have a, a, one level up? Before we get to the editing and the dates, one of the, one of the challenges with these goals when reading them is we all spoke in our own voices. And it's not very, it doesn't look like board goals. It looks like Doug's goals, Joe's goes, Susan's goes, Jill's goes, Mark's goals. And I, I think that's a bad message. So I was hoping at some point this would look like a set of board goals like we had back, back around, um, when I think Julie Novak did the goals. I think that was the last time we had. It was nice looking, but I think that's important to have something that people can look at that looks professionally done and not just a, you know, a bunch of our Word documents slammed together. So I maybe with, based on the comments, maybe it would be wiser that we maybe two members of the board take it and try to make it look like something professional or, I don't know if Ms. John Wortman was planning on doing anything like that for us with the goals or his sort of role in this has stopped other than keeping, you know, us on track. But I think the appearance of this is equally as important as the content.
Could it be that this is actually sort of our working, you know, guidance, but that the, what you're talking about is possibly just sort of the headline seven goals with less detail under them and then made to look attractively readable and engaging. And, you know, maybe there's some tweaking to how the wording goes. But with that sort of, in the same way, I think it was, you know, in the, the set we did with Julia, there were like little street lady looking, you know, colonial lamp posts next to each goal or something. But I think again, if we focus on those seven main goals and all of this is sort of our working document, I don't know.
Right. No, I, I agree. I, I think this is more comparable to the Word document we had for Mr. Malloy that was tracking against the, um, the bubbles rather than what we put on the website for, here, here are the board's goals. What I wanted to do is make sure that we had agreement on what these meant and where we were going so that we can turn around and set goals for Mr. Malloy. And, and a task is to then convert this into a public consumable material. And I'm very happy to have one or two of you volunteer. Even if that means, at, at this stage, Mr. Wortman will be working with us again to, to finish off our process. Uh, I'm not sure whether or not that task is under his, uh, remit. But if it is, then, you know, having one or two of you work with him, that would be great. If not, we'll find a path for that.
Mr. Pato, sorry. Follow-up question. So you asked if we needed more time if, and you were suggesting perhaps moving this in the tracker, it says possibly have a one-hour follow-up session with Mr. Wortman. Is that scheduled for the 12th?
No, that, that, that's not for the 12th, right? The 12th was for us to finish our exercise. Then we're going to have a follow-up with Mr. Wortman later. And we have not scheduled that with him yet.
Okay. I'm just thinking we're getting busy. That's all. I didn't know what your timeline was for that.
We are definitely getting busy. So, uh, and there are things not yet on the timeline that will show up in the next few weeks. So we're going to be very busy. But, so it's important for us to have agreed. We will finalize that agreement next, next week.
Do you still want us to send our revisions to you? Mr. Pato or to, to Ms.?
Ms. Casselback. Are you, do you feel you're capable of doing that by Wednesday? I mean, we all have lives, right? So.
Yeah. Cause if we don't, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
It's just going to get.
Get it in, get it in on Wednesday.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Side conversations. This brings us to the end of this item, but not the end of our meeting. We have an executive session before us. And before this executive session is going to be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Cary Memorial Library Staff Association. And Ms. Barry, I believe you will be recusing.
I will be recused from this item as my husband is an employee of the town. Enjoy, people.
Right. And, and Ms. Barry was presaged the fact that we are going to go into the executive session and adjourn from the executive session. So I move that the select board go into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining in regards to the Cary Memorial Library Staff Association, Local 4928, MLSA, uh, AFT-dash-Mass, AFL-CIO. And to not reconvene in open session as the adjournment for both the open session and the executive session will occur at the end of the executive session. Further as chair, I declare that an open meeting discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the town. So we'll take a, I move that. I'm looking for a second. Mr. Lucente will, by roll call. Hey? Ms. Barry is recused. I'm a yes. Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
And Mr. Sandin. Uh, so that is unanimous. We are entering executive session.